Do we need a motion?
That's great.
Come back?
To recess county?
Hit the hammer.
Well, you call it sometimes and sometimes we do a motion.
We don't need a motion. Okay.
Wrap the gavel.
You know who we're waiting for?
Uh oh.
Wrap it anyway.
All right, if everybody could.
We shall recess.
Oh well, we'll give us flow right through. So, we're gonna end our break and move on in recess county board and convene as the county ditch authority.
Okay.
So, Mac?
Mac, local Meeker County Ditch Inspector. Over comes twenty-six year. So I'm hoping that you guys would award CD twenty-six culvert and drop inlet installation work to Weber Multi Services of Arlington, Minnesota. Little bit of summary on this, CD twenty-six is located in Acton Township, south of Long Lake. And we need one forty foot by six foot culvert to be replaced. Right now it is currently collapsing in the center and it's become unsafe for the farmer to use with heavy equipment. And then, one drowned out spot in his field. We're hoping to put a drop inlet in. And then, he came to me asking for replacement of this culvert because I had, I've been having to clean it out because a lot of stuff has been lodging in there and creating a lot of water issues and we realize it's because the center of the culvert is actually collapsing down to the point where if there any materials flowing through there, it's getting caught in it. So it's, it's become a pretty, pretty big hazard for him. And I went out for quotes and Weber Multi Services from Arlington came in with the low of thirteen thousand dollars. And the financial impact this would be paid for by all of the benefited landowners on County Ditch Twenty-Six. And I'm hoping that you would move to award Twenty-Six work to Weber, CD Twenty-Six work to Weber Multi Services for an estimated cost of thirteen thousand.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to award County Ditch Twenty-Six culvert and drop inlet installation work to Weber Multi Service for an estimated cost of thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay, motion made by Ober.
I'll second then.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion?
The benefited owners in that area, they know about this. They're aware that there's gonna be some repair.
We'll notify them in a letter.
Okay.
After it gets approved, if it does, so.
Yeah. Nobody likes to get that bill they didn't know was going on.
Right, yes.
No, they do not. I can tell you that.
Yeah, we always send letters out to everybody on the system that are getting work done.
Okay, any further comments on the culvert? Motion on the table? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, ditch twelve.
On this one, I'm hoping that we can award County Ditch Twelve erosion repair and ditch cleaning work to Weetrick excavation or excavating of Norwood Young America. A little bit of summary on this one, CD six, or CD twelve is located in Manana Township on sections twenty-six and twenty-seven and, and it is in disrepair in some areas. Section of ditch south of three fifty-fifth street will need to get repaired as it also feeds into the Crow River. And this ditch is curving really badly and is undercutting the banks on both sides. And this is causing major erosion going right into the river. A cleaning north of three fifty-fifth street is also needed as the sediment in some areas is one and a half foot deep. And some of the landowners tiles are, their outlets are close to being greatly reduced in drainage capabilities. The repair project will address slewing issues and straightening and straighten sections of County Ditch Twelve there and section twenty-seven, south of three fifty-fifth street. There's roughly twelve hundred feet of really bad ditch, south of three fifty-fifth. And the rest of that would be a cleaning north of three fifty-fifth street and that's four thousand feet worth. And then, I sent off for quotes for, to four people and two responded. The low came in with Weetrick excavation of Norwood Young America for twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. And then, all benefits benefiting property owners will be responsible for paying these costs. And I asked that you move to award County Ditch Twelve repair work to Weetrick excavation for an estimated cost of twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars.
Are these repairs and projects, Mac, from original? The original work of these ditches? I mean, has it been many, many years?
I think on the southern, southern half, the three hundred and fifty-fifth and south, that one's probably close to original, but we have done a cleaning north of three fifty-fifth before in the past.
Because like the changing of this culvert and such, I'm wondering how old?
Yeah, that one's probably pretty old.
Before we make a motion on this, it's been brought to my attention that someone would like to publicly comment on this one. So, if you want to come forward right now, yep, just state your name, where you're from, and try to be, you know, within three minutes or so or whatever.
My last, I get benefit from this ditch. And my tile is underwater by a couple of feet, by a foot. And this last year with all the rain we had, the ditch sloughed in really bad. And I mean, it fell in, and then the person that cleaned it before, didn't do the best. And it needs to be redone for me to get drainage on my property. And he came out there, he saw that the tile was, you know, it was underwater. And there was, it needs to be cleaned. Pretty much.
Now, and.
And then, one, there's one little other issue. The neighbor might be putting an irrigator on there. Could you tell him he needs to put bridges across the ditch? So we do not restrict the flow of the water, you know, because if he puts a bunch of culverts in there, are the culverts gonna be adequate, you know, for the water flow? So, those are, those are my concerns today.
Yep.
Chair, if I may, this is, I can see caulk burner slew from my kitchen window heading, heading south. So it's the south, the north side.
At the end of the ditch, we're having a, they actually, the, we need the permission to clean the end of the ditch because I got twenty acres at the end of the ditch that gets no drainage because they can't, because they're not going to clean the edge, the last thousand feet, I don't know exactly. But that needs to be cleaned so I have drainage. They don't have to go up to the lake, but they need to at least go five, six hundred feet so I get drainage. And, and basically, they're blocking the water off on that backside there, so my property is getting wet because of that. And I mean, if you have drier property, you can tax me more.
Well.
Careful what you wish for.
If, if I may, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
When Lance says they, they is DNR, right? It's DNR?
DNR is.
Or is it state or US Fish?
Actually, the DNR can give them permission to clean that. And, and Claire is being difficult to clean it.
Okay, and just to preface this, Lance is on the drainage, he's on the report. He's the one that requested the ditch cleaned and the north, or the south piece we had never cleaned. Removed some trees there a couple of years ago, I think, when they cleaned the other portion. But Lance's property is behind, basically, or a good chunk of it, of what your property that you're referencing to is on the backside, on the upstream, on the, on the north side of the ditch. And we have another scenario that just is evolving in front of us is a, a local friend of ours that likes to do ditch work is out there right now on CD twelve, Sunday and Monday, and they're probably going right now with an excavator piling trees. And there is an irrigator piled alongside State Highway twenty-two, so he will be putting in an irrigator. And that's where he's concerned about, that he's gonna have to cross the ditch to swing the irrigator. So this is all, and I just, I just mentioned this to Mac too, so this is gonna be ongoing, but what Lance's twenty acres he's concerned about, the DNR won't let the county ditch be cleaned up into their land, like, I don't know if I'm speaking, I won't let, but right now, they need to clean that, a portion of it, so he gets drainage on his twenty acres because in essence, the state is backing up water on his land. This is long and short of it. And we've sat in these, where they, we've had these meetings where, you know, that we do a wetland and they come in here with their engineer, well, it's all, it's gonna work. And I know I've questioned, well, what if it doesn't? Because this is the type of thing that comes up. They hold water back because they want water in the slew in the wildlife area and that's all well and good. But then when there's cropland back there yet too, he's, he's getting backed up on it. And so he'd like to get farther up into that system, make his property.
Will this resolve?
No, because I, this only goes up to the line, correct? The cleaning, right now?
Yeah.
So even if we prove this today, we, we got two potential problems. One is a new landowner in there that we have a relationship with.
Is that our, our friend?
Yep. And the other is, it's not going far enough to benefit Lance's property in the back. So, he's on the up, on the high, or on the, being affected by the state.
So this is gonna come back for more?
On the irrigation part, on my one irrigator, we do cross a ditch. And we made bridges out of steel that you do not have to, you don't have to put culverts. And you can always dig under the, under the bridges. And you know, there's companies out there that make bridges so irrigators can cross. You know, they're, they're out in Nebraska, but you can order bridges. And, you know, that would be a good suggestion for the neighbor. I don't want him not to put an irrigator there, but it would be nice if you, the ditch people would say here is an option, go with the bridges. You know, it ain't that much more than if you bought brand-new culverts, thirty-six inch culverts, and covered them up with dirt. It ain't that much more.
Yeah, it don't need to be a, a ten-foot ditch, or bridge.
Do we have the right to do that, though?
That's what I'd like, that's my question.
Is that a Mac request for that?
Some of this is for a different.
Some of this, right now is the cleaning, but I just wanna preface, we got a whole lot more happening as we speak. This, this just happened. That Mac didn't know until five minutes ago.
So, right now, everything Lance is talking about is more informational for the future versus this particular.
Request.
This individual request.
Okay.
But we have other potential issues on this.
Assuming now, Mac?
You'll have to do your investigation here. And I can see the joy on your face. You might wanna bring our deputy with you.
Ernie's not available, he said.
In for vacation.
Okay, we appreciate your comments Lance, and it's good to have you all here together with Mac. And then that way he has more information and we kinda know what's coming down the line. And we'll work on that as a ditch authority as it presents ourselves and what we can do to help the landlord, you know, in that case, you know. As far as, I don't know what the rules are as far as irrigations over a ditch. I'm sure there's something in the books where you can't just put a culvert in without getting approval, but I don't know. I could be misspeaking. Versus a.
It's supposed to put removable bridges.
Oh, just like the.
There's already a law.
Yeah, there's statute.
Okay. So.
You can put culverts in, but it's not, I mean, there's nothing that says they couldn't if the hydro capacity was.
Suffice for it, yep. So you got, you, like Steve said, your hands are full, so.
Then I appreciate, Lance came to me a couple of weeks ago, or a month ago already and started laying this out.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure, I was trying to get graphs or anything he was concerned about. I think we got it laid out here pretty clear, right?
Awesome. You don't need to have all bridges and all crossings and irrigation systems? I think everything you said, as long as they meet the hydro capacity, you can have them. You can appropriate them to install private bridges.
Okay. We appreciate your words Lance and no promises in the DNR in, so. We'll do our best in that, but thank you for your comments and looking for a motion on ditch twelve.
Mr. Chair, move to award County Ditch Twelve erosion repair and ditch cleaning work to Woolrich excavation for an estimated cost of twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars.
Okay, motion made by Julie.
I'll second that.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Mac. Thanks Lance.
Thank you.
Mac, I really liked the way you do this report, your, your county, Meeker County Drainage Inspector's report. I don't think we were, had that before, but that is really a nice concise addition and easy to read, easy to follow. So, thank you for that.
Yep, thank you. All right, at this time, we'll adjourn the county ditch authority and reconvene as a county board. Andrew Letson, nine twenty. Oh, well, nope, a little late on that one. Ambitious on that number there.
I guess we could say that's Andrew's fault.
Yeah. I'd like to point the blame somewhere.
Maybe you don't have to. But I won't. So, what you, I'm not gonna get into deeply on this because this is a follow-up to everything that we discussed in the last work session, and this is for you to take formal action on it. There's two things I wanted to mention, though, that have, we've gotten some movement on since this came out. The first is that the grant for the dispatch consoles, we, we learned that the round of funding that was being discussed has already gone through, but we are in line first for the next round of funding, which would come out next year. So in all likelihood, we'll find a reimbursement for that. So that's a really positive note. It's a mixed note, but it's positive. The second piece is, we were able to get the final quote for the huddle and conference room furniture. When I was putting together the motion, I was really debating, what do I put in here? Because Melissa had said fifty thousand was an approximate number and I just kept envisioning, no matter whatever number I put in here, it's gonna be fifty dollars higher than than not to exceed. The good news is, the final quote came at forty thousand, fifty-one dollars. So as you do that, that motion, I would ask that you please do this. What you are approving today is an amendment to the remodel project budget where we're shifting sixty-five thousand dollars around in there to cover some of these costs, as well as the two quotes. The, the quote for the Zibex dispatch consoles and the, the quote from Interium for the huddle and conference room furniture.
I would move the verbiage that he just used for a motion.
It's a long-written one, so.
I noticed that.
Cory's got it.
Second.
Okay, moved, motion second. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Administrator's report?
I'm gonna cut my report down pretty substantially here, just have a couple of quick things for you. First is that, you know, one of the positions that we've been looking to recruit for a while was our, for a little while, was our public health supervisor, happy to announce that Chakuma, who was our public health educator's, we promoted him into that role. We had three really great internal applicants and so we were excited about that. If you recall, last year, last fall, last winter, you approved us to enter into a new program with the state. It was a housing loan program where it provides first-time home buyers with down payment assistance. I'm happy to announce that through October, thirty loans have been issued for residents of Meeker County. Twenty-one of those are for first-time home buyers and the other nine are for other types of buyers. So, those are, there's some pretty substantial income limits on that. I mean, the income limits are fairly high. There's housing price limits and so it's helping get people in homes, which is the goal of the program. We do, we are getting to that time of the year where we need to schedule some meetings with our elected department heads, our county attorney or county chair to discuss their salaries for next year. The last two years, you appointed a committee of two commissioners to do that. And so I'd be asking today if you would like to follow that same approach. As a reminder, the folks who were part of that last year were Commissioners Obergejohnson.
I'm willing to do it again.
Would you?
Randy, why you giving me the evil eye? You love having me on that.
Yeah.
You should, anyway. I toughened up this year, so. I'm gonna be looking a little different.
You know, just for fun, I'll volunteer to.
I knew I would.
Brandy once again also.
So do we need a motion for that?
We did that last year where we had a motion appointed to.
Mr. Chair, I so moved that Commissioners Obergejohnson take on the challenges of negotiating with our sheriff and our county attorney.
I think there could have been a worse commissioner pick, so thank you.
I bet you do. I know just who you're looking at, you know.
I'd just like to add the words, no mercy.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to Obergejohnson for the committee to negotiate with sheriff and county attorney. Looking for a second?
I made the motion.
Yep, looking for a second?
I thought somebody did. We didn't, yeah?
No, second.
Oh, I'll do it.
Okay. Steve reluctantly is doing a second. And with any further questions? Any further question? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Onto board, Commissioner Committee update. Oh, sorry.
Two more, two more very quick things. First, as has been mentioned multiple times today, don't forget to vote, it's election day. As of yesterday, the county had received and processed about fifty-eight hundred mail-in ballots, whether that's mail-in precinct or absentee ballots. It is down compared to the six thousand, two hundred ninety-five that we had gotten in twenty-twenty, but that's not surprising based on what was going on in twenty-twenty and the push to the mail ballots and because of the pandemic. But of that fifty-eight hundred, four hundred came in Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So they've been very busy over there.
They were busy on the weekend.
And, you know, per Barb, a lot busier than they were expecting to be over the weekend, so. In twenty-twenty, as I think we all know, Minnesota had the highest voter participation rate in the country. And certainly, our hope is that Meeker County can help achieve that distinction again. So please be out there and vote if you're watching this. And lastly, as a reminder, county offices are closed on Monday, November eleventh in observance of Veterans Day.
All right. I saw the green lights.
Yes, yes, we are participated in, this was on the list of things that I cut out of here, but we participated in NACO, the National Association of Counties, green light program where it's intended to provide kind of spotlight programs that are for veterans and show support for veterans. So it's something that NACO has done the last few years and we've been a participant.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Thanks for the veterans, especially Steve and Andrew who are on our board. And moving on to county commissioner updates, if we could be a little more abbreviated, I'd appreciate it.
I'll start quickly.
The chair.
I'm, I'll just go over anything. I had several meetings of interest, probably was, I had a Supporting Hands meeting yesterday, which I love Supporting Hands, as you know, and found out that they're taking Prime West Health Insurance. They, they got a quote from them. Their insurance was going way up and even though it's a little more, they're, they felt the benefits were better and it was a lot less than what they quoted. And we're gonna have, again, an overall reduction in what we pay and I think that comes out of tan off funds. And so there will be more tan off funds for that. I had CHB, we just did budgeting and COLAs. And Woodland, they're still working on our new things. So, I had others, but there was nothing, you know, mostly it's just budget stuff this time of year and COLAs, so.
All right, thanks Beth.
I'll leave it at that.
Should I go next?
Jules.
Okay, here we go. I had the Pioneer Land Library Meeting in Wilmer on Thursday, the seventeenth. Seventy-five percent of the twenty-twenty-four budget has been distributed and that's right on schedule. The budget will be proposed for five percent increase for twenty-twenty-five. And the health insurance increase ended up being four percent, which was much better than first anticipated when they began researching for health insurance for their library folks. And we had a work session on the twenty-second. The three-county public health meeting, CHS, was scheduled for Halloween, the thirty-first, but it was canceled due to the weather and it was rescheduled as an online meeting, which we had then Friday morning, November first. Beth mentioned there were several year-end business items. They elected to use Blue Cross Blue Shield as their new health insurance. That was a ten percent increase, which, you know, ouch. But it was better than a number of others that they had researched and it was a very comparable package to what they had in the past. COLA was passed at two-point-five percent. Administrative budget was determined for twenty-twenty-five and the list of all the grants were presented and approved. And here we are today, and that is my report.
Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
Paul.
Okay, we had a map meeting in which we just kinda went over what happened from the scavenger hunt and then looked at a planning. We had a little trunk retreat on Halloween for the kids. CCT meeting the following day, talking about the building, they're gonna get a new facility for CCT in Wilmer. So we did a little strategic planning on that. Then on Friday, we had our full board, Joint Powers Board, CCT meeting in Wilmer. Several items discussed there. Financially, we're in good shape. We got some new buses and we're in good position. Hospital board then, the following Monday. The only thing there, there was a lot of discussion, but the big item was we approved the remodeling of the pharmacy, which, folks, needs to be so bad. They are in such cramped quarters, it's just unreal in the pharmacy.
That's where we're gonna start with our remodel up there. That's because that's something we have to do and we won't have to move it if we, when we build on clinic. It's gonna be done. Should have been, it's been on the agenda for Halloween. It's wonderful.
Then I had Pro Works meeting, once again, just went over, very good position there. Again, we're still well in the black. We put some more money into savings, so doing very well at Pro Works. Then Thursday and Friday, I spent in St. Cloud at a Centra Care strategic planning meeting. Very interesting there because I get to speak with many of the other hospital boards and so forth that are also with Centra Care that are very similar to where we, we are. Small town and now they're affiliated with Centra Care. So, little bits and pieces there. Monday, had a CPT exec board meeting. We preliminarily, preliminarily approved the budget for twenty-twenty-five and we will bring that forward to the full board one month from that day. XL Energy was at the Opera House. Misread the time on my calendar, so I walked in at the end of the meeting.
Nobody's home.
I did have a chance to speak with a couple of the guys that have been here to present to us and then Julie was there, so she filled me in on what went on. But then, on Friday, Central Minnesota Jobs and Training had a presentation, to our presentation by Mike Kutske, I believe is the way you pronounce his name. He's from Cosmos. He is at Ridgewater College. Fantastic speaker. But he was talking about, there's a, there's an app out there, it's called Lazy Apply, where you go in, you tell AI what parameters you want, you build your resume, and you could apply for a hundred different jobs throughout whatever, whatever area you do. And it sends a resume tailored to that company in your name. So it's, it's interesting. There's also an applicant tracking system. And then there's an AI-powered resume analyzer. So I wonder how soon Mikel is gonna be getting, you know, using a tool like that to analyze those resumes to see, but.
Will it be Mikel or will it should be AI?
Should use AI. So it was, it was just really, it was interesting and they talked about downloading Copilot, which was on my computer at home, and so I activated it. Man, that's unreal. You just sit and talk to it. And it'll put it into a sentence that's, you know.
Laurie won't talk to you?
That's what I was like, problem is at home, you have to talk to the computer now, huh?
He said within six months, you could get a phone call and it's gonna seem like you're talking to that person because you can actually interact.
What is that app, by the way?
The voice will be the same, everything. You will think that you are talking with a real person.
Is it called Copilot?
Copilot.
Copilot.
The issue with the resume, of course, I am on a board where that's, was decided later that that's how one of the candidates was flown in and on the interview was absolutely not good. And a lot of time and money was wasted on a resume that was, we decided written by AI afterwards, so.
That's the other side of it.
He said, he said at Ridgewater, when, when they turn in papers, they have analyzers to tell whether it was produced by AI.
That's what's gonna probably happen in the future.
Teacher now.
You're looking at this guy going.
Is it real or is it memorized?
Yeah, there you go. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
All right, thanks, Paul. Steve?
I'll go quickly. Grove City Care, Oktoberfest was on the thirteenth. They served about two-hundred-and-ten people and generated about thirty-eight hundred dollars. The.
They have fun over there, that is fun.
The, uh, amount of people served was about the same, uh, dollars are down about seven hundred dollars, basically because they didn't raise their prices and cost food was up. Uh, went to XL Energy's, uh, the power line, uh, transmission line in Kimball. On the thirtieth in the evening, there was about, um, a hundred and sixty people in that meeting, and that lasted from six till nine, so a lot of robust discussion there, um, a lot of challenges, I think, um, however you want to look at it, uh, either side of the coin there. Um, coming, so lots more to learn on that one. Um, AMC Zoom, um, you did get an email on that, kind of basically, we just went over a kind of finalizing after the district meetings, which they had very good attendance at, um, the priorities, and they basically approved the two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-dollar increase to the budget. So ours went up two thousand dollars, I believe our increase was, we were one of those counties, that the minimum was two thousand, and in larger counties, uh, had a formula there, so that was, but that's in an email to each of us, should have that email kind of, of the, the, uh, the finalization of that district meetings and what came out of that AMC board meeting on the first. Um, and then we have a DOC meeting tomorrow here at noon, and I'll do back four for Paul. And also, we have negotiations, negotiations, negotiations.
Thanks, thanks, Steve. And as Steve said, negotiations, 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 that's what we, I have going on. And then I have a watershed meeting tomorrow too, and I think we have negotiations right after the meeting too, so.
Well, just quickly to Mr. Chair, Andrew and I drove over to Wilmer and had a meeting last week with, uh, some members of the shelter.
Oh.
We discussed, I think it went well.
Yep.
We're all kind of on the same page, we have a plan in place to approach some of the counties, and I, I think everyone was glad we did it. At the end, it opened some communications.
That's what we're looking for.
So.
Yep, some guidance to just get them forward, rather than just ask for a, for a will.
To be fair, everybody wants that, I, it's just, so, we'll see.
Yeah, I think your board
Yep.
uh, needs assistance from the county board. You know, we need a bigger voice.
We had the city administrator, we had the county administrator there, so. It was good.
Excellent to hear. All right, and like Andrew said, go out there and vote, and we adjourn, thank you. So what do you, now I need to step out then, or?
Yeah, so now we have the joint ditch eighteen meeting.
Oh, that's right.